All right, good evening. This is the April 5th, 2023 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Kamada.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Councilmember Thede.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Bailey.
Here. I do know that we're making a bit of an adjustment to our agenda this evening, so I think what I would do, first of all, is I'll turn it over to Councilmember Dennis, because he had something he wanted to add for council on consent, and then I'll mention something about a closed session.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be making a motion and then seeking a second on that. But tonight, what I would like to do is motion to add an item onto our consent agenda under what we will call Letter S. And so, in essence, what I'll be seeking is request that our city staff provide a detailed SWAT analysis related to the petition filed by Wholesom on March 16th, 2023, for annexation of 119.5 acres in the Cottage Grove in preparation for the April 19th public hearing. So along with this, I get to provide just a little bit of additional direction along with the request. So here's what the direction would be. First and foremost, just so folks know and understand what a SWAT analysis is, it's a analytical tool that's used to map positives and negatives that lead to best outcomes for planning purposes. So SWAT itself stands for strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats. So this is a tool that's used by many organizations, businesses, government entities, et cetera, that utilize the benefits of that to help to map out a picture that leads to informed and positive decisions. So the emphasis of direction that I would like to provide is to ask our staff to intrinsically forecast any and all foreseeable costs to our city, both current and future, so that we can understand the financial implications should our council decide to accept the application for annexing any portion of Gray Cloud Township. Now, because it's been intimated by the applicant that they may seek to apply to add up to 120 acres of land per year for annexation, I would seek our analysis to look at the long-term considerations relative to future operations and maintenance costs that we as a city would undertake. So in essence, what burdens will we face if Gray Cloud Township goes at this in a piecemeal process, or at some point if they came forward and said, "We're going to seek, you know, that you take the totality of our community on"? We would be in a position where we would have to make some decisions. So if they were to lose, let's say, a substantial amount of their tax base and become insolvent, there could be a potential that we would be taxed with annexing their entire community if they were to make application of that with us. So in essence, you know, for consideration of this SWAT analysis, what ballpark amount of tax capacity could we expect, and what would it cost us to fund core levels of government service for that community? What these costs would be equal to? Would they be higher, lower, or current with our average that we currently have for tax per capita numbers for our residents? And how might that impact? So in essence, staff generally does a very good job of performing this type of analytical data for us, and what I'm really seeking here is an opportunity for us to have this be mapped out in such a way that gives us a really good opportunity to make an informed choice. And I think that's fair, and that's without anybody tipping a hand, whether they're pro or against, just get us the information, get us the data and the facts so that we can analyze that, and not just look at the immediate, but also potential for a future as well. Because I know one of the things as a council that we always have prided ourselves on and seek to do is to make decisions to stand the test of time, so that in the future, you know, people can look back and say, "You know what? That made sense, or it was the right thing to do." Or they made a good decision maybe by not doing that. So we just want to put ourselves in a position here so that we can be informed on that. So in essence, that's what I'm asking for, and if this does get approved and put as an inclusion onto our consent agenda tonight, that would mean that there would be no public testimony received at this meeting because the topic itself would be on the consent agenda.
Okay. On that topic.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Before you do that, though, I wanted to just do, I think we'll do this together, because the other thing I wanted to mention to the council is we do have the opportunity tonight, since we have not had any conversations about this particular subject, where we do have a, are able to have a closed meeting at the end of this meeting for attorney-client privileged communication to discuss the annexation of the Holam? Holam? Wholesom property and potential litigation, and that's by Minnesota statute, Section 13D.05, subsection 3B. So what we're asking then, I believe, if I'm okay with that, Councilmember Dennis would like to add his item for staff's direction as item S on consent, and then what I'm asking as part of the approval process is for us to go into a closed session at the end of the council meeting.
I'll second both, so that we can make the adjustment to the agenda.
Well, you made a motion. So you made the motion. Who wants a second?
Second.
Second, that's Councilmember Thede. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So if I'm okay with to say this to our attorney, we just adopted the agenda, am I correct? Perfect, so I don't have to do that again. All right. So the next item then on our agenda, just so we're all back on track here, is open forum. And this is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on anything that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so at this point. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and we also had a sign-up sheet out in the entryway, and we did a one individual sign-up. Bonnie Madder, if you want to just come up and state your name and address officially for the record.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I signed up for three things, so this is item number one. And my name is Bonnie Madder, 6649 Inskim Avenue, South Cottage Grove, Minnesota. And so my first item is just a general comment. I would greatly appreciate it if in the future, when city staff stands up to make a presentation, that they state their name and the city and state that they are from. Thank you. I have to do it. I would appreciate it if staff could do it. Thank you.
Okay.
Not their address, city and state. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else that wants to speak on open forum this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close open forum, and we'll move to number six, which is presentations, and we do have three this evening. The first presentation is the South Washington Watershed District presentation, and I believe Matt Moore, who I haven't seen in a while, welcome back, Matt, who is the administrator of South Washington County Watershed District. So welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, it has been a while. So I was commenting that it seems like a long time since I've actually been in City Hall in Cottage Grove, so. Once again, the board has asked me to give you a brief update, and we'll cover some of the things we worked on last year, some of the things we're working on this year, and I've got a few local interests for Cottage Grove. So with me tonight are Managers Doucette and Manager Stevens, newly appointed manager Stevens, so both are from Cottage Grove, so. So we started out, one of the big things we did last year was we did a little internal reorganization, and so what we now have is John Loomis is our deputy administrator, and we hired a new person to take over a lot of the project work, Kyle Axtow, and so we have a good staff going and a lot of projects going. We're going to have four different projects this summer, so quite a bit of work. We continue to shift the organization away from the flood control, now that our project is done, and so we are focusing primarily on water quality, and one of those projects, well, two of those projects will be this summer. We'll start a project up in Woodbury, and we're doing a project down in Newport, so, and those are projects, you know, water quality projects that we're continuing to do, and we're trying to leverage our dollars with city dollars. So we're doing contracts and agreements with cities to do maintenance and operation of those facilities, so that's working out very well. We're, we also did a couple of projects down in St. Paul Park and last year, so just keep plugging away at those water quality projects. And we are, we're also increasing support for de-icing. As Ryan knows, we're working on getting de-icing control to the cities, primarily the electronics on the trucks, so we're focusing on that. We're also in, working on enhancing street sweeping, and we'll be rolling that out this summer in Woodbury, and hopefully if it works pretty well, we can come down here and try to talk staff into doing it down here as well. So, and then we're also, as I mentioned, leveraging those dollars with the cities to do the O and M on those projects, so. And then we did, for a brief time, get engaged with the Mississippi River. Representative McCollum is introducing a bill or reintroducing a bill that will bring dollars to the Mississippi River, so we're hoping that if that legislation passes, we'll be able to get some more dollars to do things down around the river. And then also, we've been involved in the Nelson Backwater Mine EIS, so that project is baffling. So, and then also, we've been very involved in the Lower St. Croix One Watershed One Plan, which is in the eastern portion of our district, but that allows us to access state clean water dollars to do projects for the St. Croix and Lake St. Croix. And then for '23, we're re-engaging our Citizen Advisory Committee, so if anybody's interested, give our office a call, and we can always use another person and ideas. We're looking ahead to the next plan update, which will start in '24, so the CAC will be up to speed by then, and then we'll start on our plan update. Continue our water quality work. As I mentioned, we're going to be constructing 16th and Cedar down in Newport this summer, and then the regional BMPs up in, a couple up in Woodbury, and, you know, looking for opportunities to utilize park land and things where we can to put in more water quality treatment. And then we're planning on some work done in St. Paul Park, and then, of course, expanding that sweeping, so hopefully we can start expanding that program, and because it's by far the best effort to clean up stormwater, so. And then we're planning to resurvey the Gray Cloud Channel this summer, too, where we built that project down there a few years ago. So local interest to Cottage Grove is, of course, the capital improvement, coordinated capital improvement program. I think we had, how many, Ryan, three? Two? Two applications from Cottage Grove this year, so. And then we continue the work with the irrigation controller program, and then we're looking at Hamlin Park, and then there's, which is right on the border, but 65th and Geneva, that ravine going down the hill. So we've been working with the county on that, and hopefully something will come out of it sooner or later. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Well, I'll just say real quick on my point, I was literally going to ask you about the 65th and Geneva, because even though technically most of it's not in Cottage Grove, it's actually Newport, but obviously a lot of our citizens go down that way, and we've heard a lot of comments, especially, I think, Councilmember Dennis, about that particular stretch of roadway and some of the challenges, both from a traffic standpoint, which I know the county's looking at working on, but also stormwater runoff. So I think that's a really good one, that is an important one, at least for me, and I think, even though, again, it's not in Cottage Grove, it's one that definitely would affect the citizens of Cottage Grove.
Yeah, and the county has now put in a plan of when they're going to construct it and stuff.
Perfect.
Using those, that sales tax that they were able to get passed.
Perfect. Councilmember Olson?
Good to see you, Matt. It's been a while.
Thank you.
You have an age today, though, just so you know. Let's talk rain gardens. Are you doing anything with rain garden programs this year?
We still have the program. We try to steer most of that work now to, through us, to the Conservation District, and they kind of handle that program for us. So yeah, if anybody's interested, they can give our office a call, and we'll get them set up.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yep.
All right, any other questions or comments? Same note, thanks for coming and sharing insights.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the partnership that you do with the community.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, next on our presentations this evening, which some of us started to hear about recently, and that is spring flooding preparation and responsive presentation, and I believe Gwen Martin, who's the deputy director of public safety and our police captain, is going to walk us through this one. Welcome, Gwen.
...
Oh, and Ryan is going to be there, I'm sorry. I noticed that now, that our public works director, Ryan Burfina, will also be there.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. Our spring flood preparedness and response presentation will be brief, and I just wanted to point out a couple of areas that we focus on. If you see on the slide, we have the lower corner of our city and Gray Cloud Island at the bottom. There are three red circles, River Acres Neighborhood sees a lot of riverine flooding in the spring, and then the two access points to Gray Cloud Island, which is the Gray Cloud Trail Bridge and the Gray Cloud Island Drive Causeway.
One thing I always like to touch on is what river gauges we look at, because there's not a river gauge in Cottage Grove, and also, how does the river react? Because it's a little different in Cottage Grove than a lot of the cities like St. Paul and Hastings that are more on the river channel. We do look at the Hastings Gauge, that, from all the history we have, what's happening in Hastings, we can then extrapolate to what's happening in Cottage Grove. But what's unique is it's really more of a lake next to Cottage Grove, because we're up from the Lock and Dam. So as those river flows increase and you start to see St. Paul going up and Harried Islands going underwater, you can go down to Gray Cloud Island and nothing's changing, because they just continue to release more water through the dam. It's not really till Hastings gets to that, you know, 13 to 15-foot range, that above that action stage, where you see any movement in our river level. So you'll hear about all these things happening and cities responding, and you'll go down to our bridge and nothing's changed. So that's the one unique thing, is that water has to reach a certain level and basically reach the capacity of the dam, and then you see our river level start to go up. But because there's so much flood storage, such a big area down there, it still goes slower than what Hastings does, so it can be a little anticlimactic for us, because there's just not a lot happening. So that's one thing I always like to touch on, because it just takes time for that to happen.
Just for situational awareness, this is kind of a zoomed-in view of the Gray Cloud Island access. You've got the overhead view. We used our drone for some situational awareness this week and got pictures of what's going on down there right now. You can see the Gray Cloud Island Drive Causeway and the Gray Cloud Trail Bridge, and the water levels were at normal level.
So in terms of our actual flood outlook, you've heard a lot about the Mississippi River downstream from St. Paul, you know, has definitely an elevated chance for major flooding, and then still water as well in the St. Croix. These levels here, the action stage, moderate flood stage, major flood stage, those correlate to specific descriptions the National Weather Service has, which are listed here. That's kind of the standard terminology, and we have those levels set in Cottage Grove as well, just from some work that was done back in the 2000s to understand what happens. And really, there's three main areas of concern in Cottage Grove. We've got the bridge that Gwen showed. When the water gets to a certain point, 691 feet, we have to close the bridge. Then you also have River Acres with some of the homes down there that can actually get flooding, because there's a couple that are low enough, one in particular, that's the greatest concern. And then our biggest issue is if the water overtops the causeway, the second fill. That's when Gray Cloud Island, you know, access is severed. And I want to be very clear that right now, the way the flood outlooks are looking, there's definitely a chance that the Gray Cloud Bridge could close. There's about a 60% chance of that happening based on the current and final outlook, but it's a very low chance of water going over the top of the upper causeway. You know, that's really where Gray Cloud Island is severed from access, and it's a much bigger concern. That is not really elevated. That's kind of a, it could happen, right? Anything could happen. You could get a lot of rain upstream from us, and we could have that major flooding, but really, the way the outlook looks is that's not necessarily in the cards for this year at this time. We'll continue to monitor it, right, you know, because things can constantly change, but at this point, it's more the Gray Cloud Trail Bridge that, you know, we have that potential concern of closing and then having to route all the traffic on the causeway.
So our emergency management planning team is always thinking about spring flooding. It's one of the things that affects Cottage Grove every year. But in particular, since February 2nd, we've been meeting, and we've been meeting biweekly for preparations for anything that might need to happen. If and when floodwaters approach dangerous levels, we would start meeting on a more frequent basis, weekly, than up to daily. But to date, what we have done, we have created a, our communications division has created a flood preparedness and response webpage with a lot of good information for residents. We've updated some flood risk maps from our GIS department. We've sent two letters out right now to residents. They were directed at Gray Cloud Island residents and River Acres Road residents. We have also prepared for volunteer recruitment, coordination, and management, because what happens when the floodwaters come up, people start thinking about sandbagging. And in the past, All Saints Lutheran Church has been responsible for that. They have stepped up and wanted to take that on, and talking to them this year, they said they just couldn't do it. Combination of factors, low member numbers, age of a lot of their members, and they said, "We just can't do it." There's a lot of them that would love to help, but they just can't take on that management and coordination. So we started planning for one of our departments to do that, to take that on, and we had plans all set up, ready for volunteers to come in and sandbag, do production, and then we would deliver them down to River Acres Road, and the residents could call, ask what they needed. We'd do what we could and then facilitate volunteers to potentially help with whatever else some of the older folks needed. And at this point, as you can see, we have a, GIS put this map, this is a 692-foot line, and that is what we hit in 2019. Right now, the residents have about a 25% chance of meeting or exceeding that level, and we did not have a large ask for sandbag help, so we did not go forward with the volunteer day or days of making sandbags, but we've got that plan in our back pocket should things change.
I guess the final thing I'll mention is the biggest effort for sandbagging down in River Acres was this home, I think it was 8327 River Acres Road. This is the one home that had a walkout-style basement, and each year, the river came up much at all, they had to get about 3,000 sandbags to sandbag their home. In the past year, they have actually built a flood berm out of clay with just one small opening out the walkout, so it's very easy to just put a small number of sandbags, and now they have that flood protection. So that was key, where we don't really need to do the 3,000 sandbags anymore. It's only a couple hundred, so that was a big change, where that home is just not in the same type of risk that it was in the past. So that was a good thing that they did. Really, that'll take care of them in the future years. And with that, we'll stand for any questions.
Council, any questions for staff, either of the two? I figured you guys had it under control. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kamada.
Did this property owner consult with the city on the development of that berm, or was it, did the city request that they build the berm, or what? How did that? I know that that property and some, several other properties have been susceptible in the past. What gave them the idea to do it now?
So when I went down and spoke with the current resident, Salvador, he said that the previous property owner had built that berm, so he wasn't aware of, the other, the previous property owner had been subjected to floods in the past year. He has not, he's only been down there for a couple of years, so I am not sure exactly what happened, how that berm was constructed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. Thank you both again for presenting and sharing with the public, and hopefully we won't have to worry about it. All right, our final item under presentations this evening is the Autism Awareness and Acceptance of our Monthly Proclamation, and I believe Pete Kerner, who's our Director of Public Safety, is going to is going to at least kick us off on this one. And then I think Councilmember Olson is going to read the proclamation.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council. I think someone messed with my, the packet because they wrote a brief, they added in "brief presentation," so. But yeah, in a moment, I will kick it off, so. If we start it from the front, but this is a really cool proclamation. I know you guys do many throughout the year. But Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month, this is something we've been doing with the city for quite a long time. And I was trying to remember the year, but I think it was back in about 2011. Councilmember Peterson, at the time, Jen Peterson, I know Councilmember Olson was, Mayor Bailey around, Dave Thede, Councilmember Thede. And back then, it was brought up to us about just some awareness training. So the Police Department really took it to heart. Jen Peterson had a family member. So we've been doing a lot of the training for quite a long time. And you'll hear there's some different mandated trainings. Police officers now, every three years, we have to have 48 continuing education classes. And 16 of those have to include like de-escalation, four hours of it is autism. But again, Cottage Grove PD, Public Safety, we're ahead of the game. We did that training about 11 years ago. The instructor was phenomenal. He was a Hennepin County paramedic, and he came in and his son lives with autism. So it was just a really good, he was really able to relate with all the first responders on things to look for, whether it's a medical or a crisis. So I'm really proud of our team. We've had quite a few of our officers that this, we're all touched by autism, family members, friends, we all seem to. So they kind of talked about, how can we, how can we jump at some opportunities? And when I talk about autism awareness and acceptance, it's not just the Public Safety Department. It is really citywide. And I really liked this part of the statement here that when Eric put together the proclamation, I just think it speaks volumes for how our city is, whether it's volunteerism, working with any community. I just really thought that, I really liked how this was worded, and it felt good, so. But we did, our Public Safety Board is always looking ways to raise money. Back in 2011, it was the Public Safety Board that the autism awareness training was free. But the association was like, well, donations would be welcome. So our Cottage, our Public Safety Board did make a donation. And again, this is kind of a way we thought we could raise a little more money for a good cause. So they are selling these patches. They're in the Police Department lobby. They're $10 a patch. All the proceeds go to the Public Safety Board, and they're so generous to us. And one of the areas is for additional training for Public Safety Staff, community, different things like that, so. And on our Facebook page, there's also information for those that can't make it here, how they can order it. Another thing that we did this year is Sergeant Van Hallinger from our reserves designed this license plate. And really, it's, I think it was just a really cool idea because I've had a lot of my friends already whose children live with autism. They're like, wow, the Police Department didn't even accept us. And, you know, so it's just kind of a more of an awareness thing. It's just one more thing. And Public Safety, sometimes they say we're cursed, but we're also blessed that we have quite the platform of connecting with our community. And the license plates were just another opportunity. And with this, when the month is finished, then these plates will be keepsakes for the officers. They'll reimburse for what they cost. But just something when we retire, we can, you know, remember back that we're one of the first departments that have really taken this on, so something to be proud of. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Olson for the proclamation.
Fantastic. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you to Director Kerner for those comments. You know, my wife and I, as parents of a son with autism, are extremely grateful to the entire city, the Public Safety Team, obviously, the board, the Public Safety Board, for embracing autism awareness and acceptance. And I remember when that training occurred. And, you know, it speaks to the leadership of the city and the Public Safety Team that, just like so many other things, you're out in front. You know, you're a leader, you're not a follower in terms of, you know, recognizing that there are more and more people diagnosed with autism every single day. And, you know, we need to be aware of what some of their idiosyncrasies could be, et cetera. And I know the Public Safety Board also provides free stickers that you can put in the window, either on your front door or whatever the case might be, to designate that you have somebody who has been diagnosed with autism who lives in the home. So that if there is an incident of any kind, whoever's responding understands that there may be somebody there who's not going to respond to your verbal commands, or they may be nonverbal themselves, so they can't respond, et cetera. And I know your folks trained for all of that on the regular. So I'm very grateful, and I think this is such a marvelous idea. My compliments to Justin Van Hallinger for doing such a great job on the design as well. I think, I think that's going to be a pretty popular patch to be sold in the lobby. And with that, I'd like to read this proclamation, and it truly is my honor to do so. April 2023 is Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas autism or autism spectrum disorder, ASD, refers to a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social skills, repetitive behaviors, speech, and nonverbal communication. And whereas because autism is a spectrum disorder, each person with autism has a distinct set of strengths and challenges. The ways in which people with autism learn, think, and problem solve can range from highly skilled to severely challenged. Some people with ASD may require significant support in their daily lives, while others may need less support and in some cases, live entirely independently. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control's Autism and Developmental Disabilities Monitoring Network notes that about 1 in 44 U.S. children has autism spectrum disorder. According to the Autism Society of Minnesota, that prevalence rate for autism in the state is 1 in 36, the third highest rate of 11 data collection sites throughout the county, or country, rather. And whereas parents, educators, therapists, and caregivers here in Cottage Grove continue to help people on the autism spectrum thrive, will simultaneously creating awareness and acceptance in our community through conversations, advocacy, and education. And whereas during the month of April, we strive to promote autism awareness, acceptance, inclusion, and self-determination. Now therefore, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota, hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 to be designated as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month in the City of Cottage Grove, passed this day, the 5th of April 2023, signed by Mayor and Bailey.
All right, so Councilmember Olson, you want to make that motion?
One more thing I'd like to add, and then I will. There's a note in here that says 1 in 44 U.S. children has autism spectrum disorder. And in Minnesota, that's 1 in 36. When my son was diagnosed 19 years ago, those numbers were 1 in 150. So it just goes to show you that we're getting much better at diagnoses, and we're also recognizing that this is a much more prevalent situation than it was even then. So Mayor, I'll make the motion that we proclaim April 2023 Autism and Awareness and Acceptance Month in the City of Cottage Grove.
All right, so a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second by Councilmember Dennis? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Pete.
Appreciate that.
All right, Counsel, we're now on to the consent, number seven, which is the Consent Agenda. Is there any items that Counsel wanted to pull on consent? Councilmember Kamada.
I'll be pulling Item E for Brief Discussion.
Item E. Councilmember Olson.
F, please.
You're going to pull F, and Councilmember Dennis.
I'll pull Item K.
You're doing K. Okay, anybody else? All right, well, why don't we go ahead and start with Councilmember Dennis? Because you're sliding, you see you have the notes in front of you. But what we're doing on K is accepting donations for the first quarter of 2023. So if you want to share with the public.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And usually, it's, as I like to take these, it's always my pleasure to share with the community that we've got some very generous companies and individuals that really make a great difference here on behalf of our community and making Cottage Grove be a better home through their generosity. So for this time period, which runs January 1st until March 30th of 2023, we received in totality $29,111.64 that were accepted on behalf of city operations. So we had here altogether five different donations coming in. The first one was from the Cottage Grove Athletic Association for the purpose of soccer goal purchase and equipment boxes. That was in the amount of $12,611.64. We had two donations coming in for 4th of July sponsorships. The first one from North Point and the second from Tennis Sanitation, both of those $5,000 apiece. We also had 3M step up for Strawberry Fest as a sponsor for $5,000. And then last but not least, Councilman Olson and his wife, Kim, donated $1,500 for a memorial bench in memory of Beverly Ron. And so, you know, all amazing donations, very much appreciated. And as I like to say always, that no donation amount is too large or too small. These dollars make a great difference on behalf of the whole community. So thank you for that, and Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Fantastic, thank you. Next then, we'll go to Councilmember Olson, which I believe is an appointment.
It is, thank you, Mayor. This is an item to encourage appointment for Jenny Olson to the Public Services Commission. I will start by saying Jenny Olson spells her name wrong, and we are not related. She is an O-L-S-O-N, and of course, that's by marriage, so it's not her fault. I am an O-L-S-E-N. Jenny and her husband Eric are both members of the Cottage Grove Lions. They're longtime residents of the City of Cottage Grove. They've raised two fantastic young people who, now one of which is a college basketball player, and the other one is a graduate student. And she's at that place in her life where she would like to get a little bit more involved in city government. And so we had a terrific interview with Jenny and feel she would be a wonderful addition to the Public Services Commission, and we would ask for your support. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. And then the last one, Councilmember Kamada, I believe, is a reappointment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge the request to reappoint Planning Commissioner Derek Rasmussen for a fourth term. He's been a great and active member of the commission, and I believe he brings value, and I'd like to see him serve another term.
All right, fantastic. All right, since nothing else was pulled for conversation or comments on consent, I'll look for a motion to move consent. And I should mention, just so I can say it, S was added to the consent. So anybody want to make the motion?
Move consent.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Olson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. So if anybody is here for anything on tonight's consent calendar, they've all been approved. Next on our agenda is eight is approved dispersment. I'll look for a motion to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Kamada. Any discussion on bills? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Nine is public hearings arisen on this evening. Ten is bid awards. We do have a bid award this evening, and it's the 2023 Pavement Management Project Bid Award. And Amanda Meyer from our city engineer, one of our city engineers, is joining us to walk us through this one, so welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So the 2023 pavement management area shown before you is portions of the Thompson Grove Estates neighborhood, and then also includes the frontage road on the south side of 80th Street between Hemingway and Hyde Avenue. We did open bids on March 23rd. We received six bids with the lowest bid being from OMG Midwest Incorporated, doing business as Minnesota Paving and Materials. And that low bid is at $2,939,954.36. I do want to make note, the engineer's estimate at the bottom of the table was 3.1 million. These bids were very competitive. We were happy to see these bids come in. And we have done work previously with Minnesota Paving and Materials and have had a good experience with them in the past. So with that, there's just a recommendation before you to award the project to the low bid contractor.
All right, Counsel, any questions? Did you have a question, Councilmember Kamada?
I had a question, but I would also wanted to make the motion.
Okay, why don't you do the question, and then I'll let you take the motion. Councilmember Kamada.
I'm seeing a pleasant trend where some of these bids are starting to come in below the engineer's estimates. Is that, is that something you're seeing as well, or is this an anomaly?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So I think historically, we always have our team doing their best efforts to look at the market and do their best to estimate kind of what we think the bids are going to be. I think this year, our team has just done a really great job of estimating what we think the market is going to look like this year with bids, and we've been very happy to see those results.
Thank you.
All right, now, if you want to make it.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-045, awarding the 2023 Pavement Management Project to OMG Midwest Incorporated, doing business as Minnesota Paving and Materials in the total amount of $2,939,954.36.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Kamada. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right, next, we're going to move to the regular agenda, which we have two items this evening. The first one, and Amanda's just going to, I think, going to hang out up there. And that is the East Point Douglas Road and Jamaica Avenue Reconstruction and Signal Modification and the XL Undergrounding Project. So you're back.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So back in September, we did have a workshop for our East Point and Jamaica project. During that workshop, if you recall, we did talk about undergrounding some of these XL powerpools. And we do that for various reasons. But during that discussion, there's something called excess expenditures. So those costs above and beyond relocating a private utility, gas, cable, electric, fiber, that are above and beyond relocating due to conflicts with the proposed project. In this case, to go underground, those costs would be on the city to pay for. And so since that workshop, staff has received additional information from XL on those costs to relocate underground. And so I'd like to share those with you this evening. And then would also be looking for some direction on how to fund those excess expenditures. So I know you're all very familiar with this image, but just wanted to, again, reframe your mind on the limits of the city's projects. So when we look at the XL limits of their work, you'll see that they coincide. But as I mentioned, so as our design team looks at the proposed improvements, they are looking for those conflicts with existing private utilities, identifying those, and the costs to relocate those are on that private utility company. Now again, when we look at the relocation from overhead to underground, there are excess expenditures that the city would be required to pay. You may recall, we've done this on a few other projects. So back in 2020 with 80th Street between Jamaica and Keats Avenue, and then also along East Point Douglas, all the way from Menards to Keats Avenue. There were two separate projects, I believe, as well as a little bit along Keats Avenue up to that Ravine Regional Park. Just also wanted to reiterate real quick, we did, during the bid award for this project, did include the bid alternate in front of Menards for that mill and overlay. So as you look at the XL undergrounding scope, it does coincide with the city's project. So to just give you a quick legend, if you will, the orange that you see on the west side of Jamaica Avenue is existing underground. And there's, as I mentioned, that existing underground on the east side of Menards along East Point Douglas Road. The light blue that you see along 90th Street and Islay Avenue is existing overhead power that would remain as overhead power that is outside the limits of the city's project. Excuse me. So then, the red lines that are outlined with the yellow boxes, those are the areas that XL is focusing on to relocate underground. So there's about 160 feet near the intersection of 90th and Jamaica Avenue. There's about 1,200 feet along the east side of Cottage Grove Plaza, Target, and Carlson Auto, and then another roughly 1,200 feet on the south side of Menards. Now I mentioned, there's a few different reasons that, excuse me, there's a few different reasons that we would look to relocate underground. And I think this image shows a really great example of why that is. So on the east side of Target, these powerpools that exist today between the curb and the trail are in conflict with the city's proposed project. If those poles were to be relocated and stay above ground, they would need to be relocated where those trees exist today. Now I want to mention, those trees are private trees on private property. So that would be private trees being removed, additional temporary construction easement to complete the work, and permanent drainage and utility easement that would need to be acquired from the adjacent property owner for those poles to be relocated in that area. Now along this roughly 1,200-foot stretch, there's at least 30 mature private trees that would be impacted. that would be impacted if the poles were just relocated, and at least three property owners where additional temporary construction easement and permanent drainage and utility easement would need to be acquired. So this is a great example of a location where undergrounding is a good idea where we can relocate that within the existing narrow right-of-way and locate that underneath the trail in this case. So those excess expenditures, since the workshop in September, Excel has gone through a scoping estimate and then completed their design of this proposed project, and then provided the city with their engineer's estimate of those excess expenditures, and you'll see that dollar amount on the top of the screen before you. There's three different ways that the city can pay for that. The first option is a CRFS rider. That's a City Requested Facility Surcharge. This is something that we discussed at that workshop. At the time, we estimated it would be about $1 per residential home per month for about a 36-month period. Since Excel has completed their design and their engineer's estimate, that dollar amount is actually 93 cents per home for a 36-month period, which would total $33.48. What that would look like to a resident, right now, they see a $1.65 franchise fee. They would still see that on their bill, and below that, there would be a specific line item that is titled the CRFS rider at 93 cents. The second option for payment is using that CRFS rider, but then reducing the franchise fee. So instead of seeing a $1.65 franchise fee, they would see 72 cents for the franchise fee, and then 93 cents for the CRFS rider. So in total, it would still be the $1.65, and they would not really see a change in those fees on their bill. Now what that means for the city, though, is if we're not collecting those franchise fees over a 36-month period, that's impacting the city's roadway maintenance fund, which ultimately funds the spot curb replacement, spot sidewalk replacement that our Public Works team is doing throughout the year, but it's also really funding our mill and overlay program. So if we're not collecting those franchise fees, we're not funding the road maintenance fund, and therefore, we'd be delaying our mill and overlay program. Based on what we're estimating for this year's mill and overlay project, it's about 1.7 miles. Over a three-year period, we're almost at five miles of roadway that we would have to delay in our mill and overlay program if we chose to reduce that franchise fee to cover these excess expenditures. The last option is for the city to prepay that dollar amount. The city then would bond for that dollar amount over a 15-year period, and the residents would see an impact of about $4 per home per year over that 15-year period, which totals about $60 per residential home. I do want to mention also, it's not currently in our FMP to bond for that dollar amount, and if it was bonded for, that's additional debt service to the city. So that could potentially impact future project funding. So all that being said, staff is recommending moving forward with option one, which is that in the green box, using that CRFS rider, but not reducing the franchise fee. And so what that looks like, I know there's a lot on the screen before you, what I just want to highlight, on the left-hand side is the flow chart provided by Excel to utilize the CRFS rider method. And tonight, we're actually at step seven, which is highlighted in that blue box. At this point, the city needs to determine how to fund those excess expenditures. Once that's been determined, Excel can move into construction, and with the CRFS rider, that actually would not be implemented until after construction has been completed. So they would look at the actual dollars paid during construction, rework those surcharges to make sure there's no overpayment, those sorts of things. The city would receive a 60-day notice of that surcharge before a resident would see it on their energy bill, and then the residents would see a notice about 30 days prior to that first surcharge payment being due. That being said, I do want to then highlight, on the right side of your screen are the surcharges based on the customer class. So you can see a variety of them are at 93 cents per month. Again, that's over a 36-month period. And then the highest surcharge is at $3.72 for the larger commercial and industrial customers, as well as the large municipal pumping customers. So with that being said, again, staff is just looking for council guidance on how to fund those excess expenditures, and staff is recommending using the CRFS rider without reducing the franchise fee. So with that, I'm happy to stand for questions, and we do have a representative from Excel here this evening who'd be also happy to answer questions.
Okay, first, excuse me, first, council, do you have any questions for Amanda on this particular topic? Yeah, Councilmember Thede.
Could you go back to the three different options? And explain again the cost associated to the residents for each one? I mean, the first one's pretty self-explanatory. It's 93 cents per home per month for 36 months? And what's the middle one, in terms of cost to the homeowner?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. So if council decided to move forward with the CRFS rider and reduce the franchise fee, the residents would not see a change, so it'd be a net zero impact to the Excel customers.
However, that's what you were stating, however, if you did that, then we would cease doing mill and overlay projects for five years, because the funding that we use from the franchise fee pays for the mill and overlays now? That was a change that we did, I don't know how many years ago.
And what impact would that have? You're saying for five miles or something like that? What does the five miles refer to?
Yes, excuse me, Mayor, members of the council. So, that bullet point is saying that the mill and overlay program would basically need to be delayed for about a three-year period. Based on the amount of footage we're able to include in this year's mill and overlay program, we're estimating about five miles of roadway would need to be delayed over that three-year period, because the franchise fees would not be collected.
And what kind of negative impacts would we feel that we'd see on that?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council. So the longer you let roads go without doing any sort of pavement rehab, you know, the longer they sit, the more we're looking at more of a reconstruction or our pavement management projects with the full pavement replacement, spot curb, et cetera.
That's a general response. By that response, it could be, there would be no issue over, if it's delayed that period of time? I mean, how big an issue is it? I mean...
Well, Councilmember Thede, you do know that as part of our CIP, we do put pavement management and mill and overlays in that budget or in the conversation. And so, I mean, if you want staff at some point here to share with you what are the roads that are not going to be affected, the comment is legit, because what ends up happening is the, those roads don't get mill and overlay.
Right.
Which they continue to deteriorate, which then becomes going to be a bigger onus on the citizen, because if we have to do mill and overlay, we do a cost share. You know, the 60/40?
No, they're free.
No, no, mill and overlay is free. I'm talking about a full construct. It's, full reconstruct is 60/40, correct?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe our residential properties are assessed at a 45%.
45, okay, thank you. I just, I knew there was a number in there, so 45%. So they would, and we've been seeing some of those numbers around the, you know, $6, $8,000 range for 15 years, I believe is usually what we do for that.
Well, again, we just, we just haven't really qualified it, because I mean, we're always sticking the homeowner with these costs, and, I mean, yeah, you say, well, it's only 93 cents. It's only $33.48 for 36 months, but you get that, you get this, you get that, you get that, and pretty soon, it's a lot more than just a mere 93 cents per home.
Okay, I think I saw Councilmember Cambada.
The way I interpreted this is, option two eliminates that revenue stream from the utility franchise fee to Cottage Grove. So we're reducing our funding in our mill and overlay account. That's where they come up with that five miles. How many miles of mill and overlay do we do a year?
Mayor, members of the council, for this year's project, we're at about 1.7 miles.
Okay, so that sets back our mill and overlay program by a total of three years, which means every subsequent road that is scheduled for the foreseeable future now has to last three years longer. It's not just those five miles of road, that's every road that was ever going to get mill and overlaid for perpetuity now has to last three years longer. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, we would just have to take a look at which roads were programmed for those three years to see if they are able to wait another year or two or three, or if they would need to maybe be thin overlaid and be programmed for a pavement management project.
So it's going to catch up to us at some point?
Staff is probably, isn't necessarily going to want to say that, but the answer is yes, because what's going to end up happening is, if we decide, or if we come back and find out that some of these roads are not where they need to be, then we as a council will have to decide to raise levy to cover the cost of the money that's going to be taken out of the CRF rider. So, Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make the simple point that we don't do a project unless it's necessary. I mean, we got an investment here, we got to protect it. We've talked about this how many times over these years? A lot of times. And, you know, if you don't, if you don't protect the investment that the community made in our streets, which are assets, we don't protect that, we would be derelict of duty unless it was an emergency situation or something like that, where we had to pull hardback on any spending. This is a circumstance that we have to do for maintenance to protect the integrity of our roads. Bottom line.
Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if I'm going to ask you this or Ryan this, so Ryan, be ready, okay? I was in the neighborhood that had the first mill and overlay, and I was very grateful for that, because, you know, I've lived in that home that we built now for over 20 years. And you did that two years ago, didn't you, Ryan? Two years ago. Okay, so was that 18 years, right? So typically, what happens is that about 25 years, we have to start talking about doing some sort of maintenance on a roadway. And if we're lucky, it's not a full reconstruct. But on occasion, we don't get lucky. And all you got to do is look at the roads and the abuse that they've taken this year with this winter, whether it's in Cottage Grove or anywhere else in the state. And I guarantee you, there's a lot more pavement damage that has occurred due to the weathering, which we deal with in Minnesota, freeze and thaw, wet, all that kind of stuff. But what I found out is because my neighborhood was mill and overlaid at 18 years, that's going to give us another 15 years of life. So my roadway won't need to be dealt with until it's 33 years old. And 33 minus 25, if I do my park high math, is like eight. Is that right? Did I get that right? Okay, it's eight. So I saved eight years before I'm going to be assessed for something. Now, the assessment is the key. So, Ryan, do you know the average assessment for a full reconstruction on a roadway? And if you don't, it's okay, but can you kind of estimate?
Mayor, members of the council, a full pavement replacement and spot curb, that's estimated about $5,000 right now. A full reconstruct would probably be more in the order of $6,000 to $6,500.
And that is the assessment that a resident would pay, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so what you did by extending my roadway life from 25 years to 33 years is you saved me five or six grand for that length of time? That's a good deal. I like that deal. And I think every resident in the city should be subject to that deal. They should have the ability to make that deal. But the only way we're going to be able to ensure that they can, it sounds like, is by continuing to fund the mill and overlay projects, so that that would then extend the useful life of the pavement. Am I off track there, or is that right?
Mayor, members of the council, I mean, that, when the council did authorize us to do that first mill and overlay program two years ago, it was a new thing we were doing, and that is the main goal, right? We're trying to get more years out of the same roadway. We just, the 25-year cycle that we're on is not sustainable, and we have to extend that beyond 30, so, and that fact is correct, yes.
Okay, perfect, good. So it really gives us an opportunity then to delay hurting the resident with an assessment that they would have to pay by providing them with a free service, essentially, the mill and overlay. Now, there's no free lunch, we know it's not free. So what we've figured out here is that for about $11.50 a year, we can continue to fund that so that we can do those mill and overlay projects and buy some time for those folks, so that they don't end up having to pay an assessment sooner than maybe they would like to. I know I certainly didn't want to, and I know the mayor went through a project here recently, and his was a full reconstruction. You know, that's not cheap. So, I mean, to me, if I look at the balance of it, it's a pretty obvious choice. I'm fully in support of option one. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do that. And I think if you look at it short-term, you might look at it one way, but if you look at it long-term, it's a much, much better deal for the resident versus having to deal with an assessment after 25 years. That's my opinion.
Okay, Councilmember Thede?
So, this is all part of the project of the, this project, right? And is there, and we're bonding for that project? We're getting some grants and bonding for that project, and why would this 471-368 not be part of those project costs?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think with option three, we're saying that could have been done, could be done, but it does result in a higher cost per home over the time of that payment, right? With option number one, you're looking at $33.48 in a total cost for a homeowner. For option three, you're looking at $60. Now, it's spread out over a longer time, but it is nearly double the cost to the home.
Even if that was within the overall bonding for the program, and, because I was looking at that thinking that was a separate bonding, it's, but it's not, it's all, that would be, it's part of the entire project bonding?
That's correct. Whether it's with the project or separate, it's still a bond that's, you know, paid for throughout the entire general levy tax base.
Which we're doing a bond anyway, it's just saying, you're saying it would be an additional $4 per home for that little piece, which is a small percentage of the larger piece?
Correct.
So just as a couple points of interest, I thought I would just share my opinion. And as Councilmember Thede, I think, knows, I'm a person that prefers power lines to be underground, put aside this, reasons for this. And I'll say frankly, if you saw what just happened over this past weekend, the housing, the houses that were without power in Cottage Grove were due to the fact that power lines, trees fell on power lines. My neighborhood never lost any power. We have no underground power lines in my area. And there were some feeders, lines, which one was close to where you live, that also was affected by this storm, which caused some of the power to go out down in Councilmember Olson's neighborhood. And that's again, because trees fell on power lines. And so, I just wanted to throw that out there, because that's one of the big things that I've always said, put aside the aesthetic piece of it. The other piece, though, is if you recall, from a council's perspective, when we first started talking about doing this project, we did talk about putting it underground. And the reason we were doing it, other than, put aside my desire for the aesthetic piece, was because we would have to take, as you mentioned, all those trees down along that stretch. We would have to purchase right-of-way, both permanent and temporary, and we already know what that's costing us to do these other areas of this stretch, and that would be added cost at a higher cost, not even just the $4 for the 60. I'm talking, if we were to go and try to recapture all that property along there, and then have to do the trees and all that, it would be significantly more expensive for all of us, city council and staff members. And so, I'm just, my opinion, one way or the other, I do think it makes complete sense to do option one versus the other two, because I certainly don't want us to, you know, hold or to deal with a mill and overlay reduction for five years. I don't think that makes sense. And we would also incur some additional levy issues in the future, I think, if we were to go with the city prepay portion. So, at this point, council, look...
Have you requested an opportunity?
No, we're not having you speak. You've been moaning and stuff over in the audience over there.
Yes.
Well, this is not...
I don't want this put on my electric bill.
Mayor, I'm going to move that we approve option one.
All right. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion?
I don't know.
Saying none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. All right.
Mayor, can I call point of order, please?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Dennis.
Again, we we have a process here in play. We cannot have people in the audience acting out and doing things which disturb the peace of our meeting and create a situation. So here's the option. Maybe we call for a five-minute recess and our chief police is in the room, and maybe he needs to be activated here to have a conversation with that individual.
We just you you just can't make noises and such during the council meeting.
But I asked.
It it does. This is not the proper place to do it.
But it was. I put I put it on the list.
It's not.
Mayor, can we take a five-minute recess?
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Pete?
Here, and the next item on our agenda is actually council comments requests.
No.
House.
I.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. My apologies. My apologies. Thank you, Justin, Councilmember Olson. There is one more regular agenda item, and that is utility and engineer division building. And Ryan Burfine, our city park or public works director, gosh, is like crazy, is going to walk us through this one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson.
So at our last meeting where we spoke about this project was a workshop on January 25. At the end of that workshop, staff was directed to complete the preliminary design for this building, but then bring it back to council so you could review it, you know, where we're at in the stage, how do the costs look, and make that decision whether or not to move forward, you know, into those final plans and specifications, completion and design. So we have done that. And tonight, we have our architect, John McNamara, with Wold Architects, to do a presentation on the preliminary design and where we stand today. Before we get into that, I wanted to just do a little bit of update on costs and some additional funding opportunities that we have been pursuing and looking into. First, I want to mention that we are still tracking well with that $14 million budget that we first mentioned last July, which was the first workshop where we discussed this project. But since January 25, we have been looking at other opportunities for funding. The first one and largest one is a state general fund appropriation request. This is a $3.5 million request to the state of Minnesota in the form of a bill, which was introduced last week and deferred to the capital investment committee. And the basis behind that request is really the PFAS component of our operation. So, once the permanent treatment plants are completed, we estimate about 25% of that division's workload is going to be for PFAS treatment plan operations and maintenance. And that's that basis. So the 25% of the 14 million gets you to your 3.5 million. As we all know, the 3M settlement is fully paying for those treatment plants. It's fully paying for the staff time to operate and maintain those treatment plants. But there is no funding for kind of support structure, right? Where are they going to be office out of, you know, their with the positions, locker rooms, bathrooms, the garage for their vehicle? And that's that's, I mean, that's a good thing, right? The settlement is supposed to pay for treatment, and that's what it's doing, which is a very good thing. But there is this added cost to have these new staff, and how are you going to, you know, house them and have a location for them to work out of? So that's the basis of the request to the state, and we'll see where that moves forward here in the coming weeks. The other funding opportunity was a grant to the South Washington watershed district. Matt Moore mentioned that earlier on, some grants that we applied for. This one is specific to the irrigation system, which we would have, you know, either way with a site like this. But we would design it to draw water from the stormwater ponds and not the city water. The watershed is very in favor of that. It reduces phosphorus sediment and overall stormwater runoff. And with that grant, then they would pay for 50% of the irrigation system and a portion of the stormwater ponds. And we estimate that grant funding to be about $230,000. So lower magnitude in that state request, but obviously still a good amount of money that would then buy down the total cost to our utility division of the $14 million. We will have determinations on those. If we do vote to approve tonight to move into final design, we would hear on both of those. We anticipate before we went to a bidding phase for this project. So council would have that understanding and consideration of where we stand for funding. And with that, I will turn over to John to talk through the preliminary design.
Evening, Mayor and council. Nice to be here to talk about this project again. Since we last met with council at a work session, we've spent quite a bit of time with staff kind of talking about the development of the design solution that we have for you here today. It reasonably is in the same configuration that we had shown previously. We've had some really good conversations operationally related to how we want this building to not only fit on the site, but how it can also be kind of a stepping stone for other, you know, potential development on that site. And so we spent a lot of time making sure that the building was sited in the right location, that the location of the front entry of the building and some of the things in the building were positioned in such a way that any future expansion of this building is easy to do. So as you look at the diagram that you have here, we have kind of the public lobby entry to the building on the north side. So we expect that there'll be a lobby in the building similar to what you would encounter at the public works facility today, where there would be a secure vestibule, where people would be able to come into the building and interact with either engineering staff or utility staff at a singular counter in that location. We are planning a conference room in that area as well with door off of the lobby area, similar to here at city hall, where we'd be able to have contractor meetings, pre-construction meetings, those types of things in this building as well. We did reorient the open office area a little bit to take advantage of some daylighting into the building off of the kind of the street side of the building there. So that office area would have five offices in there for the engineering team and the open office area for workstations. There's a workroom, a small staff break room, and a some locker rooms for the staff in that middle area there. Much of the building is vehicle storage for the utility staff and maintenance vehicles. We do have three large storage rooms to duplicate what they have at the current public works facility, but with room for growth along the north side. And then we have a small cold storage area off the end of the building for just the regular storage of light poles and and those types of things. As you'll see later in the presentation, the water treatment facility will be to the south of this, and in between the two buildings will be the staff parking area. So as we look at the design of the building and much of the development, this is is also looking to be developed for upcoming planning commission meeting as the rest of the site continues to develop. And so the materials of the building that we've been looking at and working collaboratively with STANTEC on the design of the water treatment facility there looks to have quite a bit of precast on the building. And so the larger the the large volume area where the vehicles will be parked and where some of those storage areas are will be, you know, a precast concrete material with some windows to bring daylighting into that garage space. The lower office area, we're doing a red brick similar to what we've done on other city facilities. So it'll look very cohesive to the other municipal facilities within the city. And we're even looking to incorporate a small amount of limestone similar to this building and at the fire station where we have those kind of public entry points to the building. A little bit of metal panel on the building to kind of accent some of those entry points that you see on there. And the remainder of the building is fairly utilitarian with just those garage spaces. As we kind of looked at the design of the building, we started to look at kind of the massing of the building. And what we determined was is that not only on this facility and also on the water treatment facility, is that a lower mass out in front where the public entry is and where those office spaces were appropriate for for that area. But we looked at just a simplified precast box for where the storage areas are. The nice thing about this is that'll allow for a mezzanine area over on the north side where we can have our mechanical equipment and then some additional storage in that location. So this view, you can kind of see an aerial view as you would look at the front of the building and the entry to the the vehicle garage, kind of a hint of where the parking area will be in between the buildings. This is a close up as if you were in the parking lot, looking at the front entry. So if you were coming to visit this building, you'd have a nice welcoming kind of entry to the building where you'd be able to access city staff at that location. The large windows that we have out at the front kind of simulate some of the other features that we've done here at city hall into the office areas where we have workstations. We've kind of focused that daylighting into those areas there. And as you kind of continue around the building, you can see the overhead door into the vehicle garage. And then as we kind of finish around the back of the building, where that cold storage area is. We also collaborated with STANTEC on an overall view of the whole site because we thought that would be some some good context for the council and others to see how this area will develop over time. So the building on the south along 110th and ideal is the proposed location for the water treatment facility. And you can see our access road off of ideal will split off to gain access to the front of that building and also to the front of our building. On the north side of the site, we do have a drive road that come in to serve a parking area for the public works utility building. And the intent of that would be is that would be where the entry would be to the future development to the north. So we would expand that public parking lot in that location to provide additional parking for any future buildings on the site. You can see a few blue areas along ideal. Those are the stormwater ponds that Ryan had mentioned earlier. That'll serve not only our facility, but also the water treatment facility. A couple of street view renderings, just so you can see what it might look like as you drive by, not only at the intersection there, but along ideal avenue coming down to see how the two buildings kind of work collaboratively in that area. From a budget side of things, we have been starting our collaboration with Kraus Anderson. We are about halfway through the design process, and it's a good opportunity to engage them in some estimating of it. They did, as a favor to us, look at the current design solution to see how we were aligning with what we had told council previously. And what we are understanding right now is is that our construction costs are lining up with where we expected to be at schematic design when we had presented this earlier. We were projecting about $11.45 billion in construction, which includes the site work and the building. We had included some escalation numbers in there just because of the issues that we've had in the construction market over the last couple of years. And so we expect that we will see some reduction of that in the coming year. But until we get a detailed estimate right now from Kraus Anderson, we are continuing to keep some of those escalation costs because our expected construction duration will be into 2024. So about a year from now is when we would start construction on the facility. Our project costs are still in alignment with where they were previously, and we'll continue to develop those over time. So as Ryan had mentioned, we are still tracking at that $14 million total project cost. So should council agree to continue on with the design of this project, like I said, we are completing the schematic design process or the design development process right now, expect to be finished with that here in the next month. We'll do some cost estimating on that at that point in time. But construction documents will take us about three months, which will put us into the end of summer, which we would be ready to come back to council for authorization for bidding of the project. Bidding will take a month. And what the nice thing about this timeline is is that we'll have all of the winter of '23 into '24 for procurement of some of those longer lead time items like precast and steel, so that we'll be ready to break ground in the spring of 2024, which will shorten our overall construction duration on site because all of those materials will be ready to be delivered to the site as soon as we can start putting in footings and foundations out there. So we're projecting about an eight-month construction project, which would put us complete with this project in the fall of 2024. So with that, we would certainly answer any questions related to the building or the design.
Councilmember Thede?
So, let's see, refresh my memory. What with the water treatment plant piece, what's the timing for that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that we are looking to start construction on this year. And some of those efficiencies that I talked about, you know, that project would do all the mass site grading, which if this building moved ahead, would be incorporated. The city would obviously have to pay for that, but you get that efficiency of scale. That would also bring all the utilities to the site because you needed the water in the sewer for that treatment plant either way. So that would also happen this year. So all that site development and utilities would actually happen in 2023 with the treatment plant. And the treatment plant is a much longer construction. It's a very complicated building. And that we look at finishing kind of late spring of 2025.
About construction materials and so forth, is there some because there's similarities in terms of the material used on both buildings, right?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so those are procured by the contractor. In the way we construct a treatment plant, that's a design bid build, where we bid it out and get a general contractor that would procure that, where something like this office building is more your construction manager model. So it would be two separate procurements for building materials. You know, each of those contractors have to procure their building materials. You know, each of those contractors have to procure their materials just for liability and warranty reasons. But really, that efficiency is on all the site work.
Yeah, I was just saying, like, any precast panels or things like that, if if there was some collaboration there.
Ordering it early, kind of thing.
Or going to the same, you know, vendor and so forth, that possibly there could be some elimination of some setup costs or some, you know, other things and things like that. So is that a possibility? I know it's two separate projects.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so like I said, those general contractors really have to order those. So whoever that general contractor is, they have suppliers they generally work through. So those would likely be two separate procurements. I know it would be nice to have that efficiency, but if the city were to, we'd have to kind of insert ourselves and actually order those ourselves. And you take on just a ton of liability if there's delays or defects with material to procure and supply.
Or if we have program management that that can kind of, you know, tie that those two together a little bit and get, at least if there are some significant benefits maybe to to get that collaboration. I know you can't commit to it, but.
Yep, something we can keep in mind.
Okay. Council, any other comments on this particular item? Okay. I don't believe, were you wanting to speak on this particular item?
No.
Okay, all right. Yes. All right. So with that, council, we've got a motion to authorize preps and plans as noted above. Who would like to make that motion? If there's no other questions or comments.
Mayor, I'll move that we authorize preparation of plans and specs for the utility and engineering division building project.
All right. So we have a motion by councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? Councilmember Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I will not be able to support this. Going through the process all the way back to the very first time when this came forward, I've been very, very consistent, in fact, 100% consistent with my feelings on it. It's not that it's not a nice plan. It's not that it's a good-looking building, or that there would be some benefits of getting space management and things like that for efficiencies. But there's a couple concerns that I have. And generally speaking, over the years, when I voted against something, I always dignify the community by letting folks know why I won't go for it. First and foremost, part of the funding mechanism for this facility that I recall is that we're going to have to provide some increase in water rates. Second, I've had concerns over the fact that when you, based on how this is funded and, you know, the water treatment part of it is covered through the 3M Water Settlement Fund, but the utilities building, that I believe is not. So that's that's something that we're going to have to take on additional debt for. And, you know, at this point in time, based on, you know, what I've shared with people, and I'd just be very respectful on it, my my financial outlook and philosophies don't lead me to the to the conclusion that this is the right time to take on another building. And and all of the cost factors that go along with that, when we have yet to pay off some of the other debt structures that we have. So I don't in any way, shape, or form criticize the work. I don't feel badly that, you know, there are those who feel that this is something that would make a difference. But for me, I just, as I've stated, and I've been very direct and far more verbose in our workshops, this just is not something that I could support at this time. If we were down the line a little bit, and if we had, you know, regardless of bond reading or anything else, if we had a little bit, a little bit freer debt load, I would be more open to that. But I just wanted to go on the record. So when I do say no, people will understand why.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Seeing no other, oh, councilmember Kamada.
So it was my understanding at our meeting in January that we were, we were taking this in measured steps. So approving this gets us to the next milestone, but this is not a full approval to break ground. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, following our policies, we would bring back the final plan specifications, and we would ask council to set a bid date to move ahead into the bidding process. So you would see this before that. That is a requirement of a project of this size.
So the answer is yes. I guess what the one other thing I'll just mention, interesting enough, is I had the opportunity this past week up at the Capitol to testify on a couple things that we've been trying to move forward to get some capital support from bonding bills. And one of them, which we haven't actually gotten into testifying yet, though I hear it's coming, is about this particular building. So the total cost of the project could come down to some extent because we're looking at getting some state dollars to help fund that building. The thing, though, I have to share with you, which I thought was interesting, when we were up there listening to what some of these cities were planning to do, and some were doing utility buildings and, you know, public works facilities, community centers, and so on, was one of the questions that was being asked by the leader of the of the group there, the investment committee, was what is your water and sewer rates for these particular communities out there? And I have to tell you, and obviously the council wasn't privy to this infobias, but it's in the record, obviously the public record, the level that other cities out there that are requesting bonding dollars for their projects, similar to kind of what we're doing here, is double, triple, or four times the amount that the citizens of Cottage Grove are paying for both sewer and water for various reasons. But the point of the matter is, is we're still one of the cheapest places if you're going to purchase water, obviously through our TAP system, our water treatment system, we are by far. I just thought I would throw that out there just because I thought it was interesting. I always like to learn, just like I know you do, councilmember Dennis, you know, how are we comparing with other communities when we look at the grand scale? And I do think how we're looking to fund this, should it get to that final step, along with hopefully some dollars from the state, it makes sense to me from a process where it's something that we definitely need for the future. So, all right, seeing no other comments, all of those, oh, we have a motion, then a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. All right, thank you. The next one now, I'll get to it. Thank you, councilmember Olson, is council comments or requests. So I will start with councilmember Kamada.
I'm curious if staff can put together just a broader analysis of some of the challenges we've faced with the weather we've had this year. As we kind of look forward in our 2040 comp plan, I know that we always talk about resiliency. And if this is something that we're going to be experiencing more often, is, you know, do our public works budgets need to reflect that for plowing? And, you know, snow staging, I know, was a factor this year. And I would, I would just be curious how, how ours and other communities have reacted to an above, a well above average snowfall year, and if we're taking appropriate steps to make sure that we're maximizing our our resources and efficiency.
Yeah, and I think that it's a great, it's a great call out in the sense that it's been a, I know, way back when I did my State of the City, I think we're within two of the total of last year for plowing. And I know we've had multiple snowstorms since then. And I do, and I, you know, I don't know if the rest of council, I'll just throw it in there, you know, really, really, really truly appreciate all the workers down at Public Works, all of you guys there, for the work that you did in this last storm because it was very, very difficult. And you were, yeah, it was, and I'll, I mean, I'll get to that later a little bit more. But I just wanted to mention, that would be a good point as we talk about budgets for the next 2024, 2025.
And also to commend Public Works, I know that there was a lot of downed trees, and those trees have seemed to disappear pretty rapidly. So I know those crews have been working hard to to get everyone back up and running with regard to downed trees and power lines and so on.
All right, that was it. All right. Councilmember Dennis.
Yeah, I think we need to pass a resolution here with Mother Nature and say there won't be any more snow this year. That would be it.
I saw some flying out there a little bit ago.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I don't want her to get mad.
She'll get mad.
Well, how much worse can it get? We're number three on the all-time list. But, you know, again, I, you know, I think all of us probably feel the same way, very, very appreciative of the work from our teams, not just Public Works, but also our public safety teams, too, that, you know, when people called, an ambulance showed up, right? Police officer showed up. So, I mean, it was a great effort all the way around. And I know, I had called Jennifer on Saturday, and she was down at the Public Works Building answering phones to help people get information out. So it's, it's, it's pretty cool to see. And I, and I, I appreciate the, the good spirit and nature of most of the community that understand that we have 36 square miles. It's a very large area that we have to take care of. And people worked and had been working very, very hard to do that. So appreciate, very appreciative of all the work all the way around. And so that I'll yield over.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Thede.
Well, just on that same, same theme, and you guys done an excellent job. But Joe, I was thinking that the next invention we should come up with from a technology standpoint is to to kind of positively and negatively charge, charge one or the other with the the snowflakes and and then the grass areas, you know, or we're, you know, not on the roads and so forth, so that when the snow falls, it just gets attracted to the, to the grass and we won't have any snow on the road. So, you know, I think if I could invent that, it'd probably, probably become a millionaire.
I think we just need to have heated streets like Pemiji.
Now, there's a cost.
There you go. That's all. That was it.
Councilmember Olson.
I'm going to reiterate what you've already heard. Public Works, public safety, the rest of the staff really showed their true colors on Saturday. I had an opportunity to stop down to Public Works, and I saw public safety personnel, I saw all the parks people, I saw all the Public Works folks. Jennifer was there. There were a lot of extra people who were activated to try and ensure that the residents of this community got the highest possible level of service in a really challenging circumstance. We had several trucks that, you know, struggled with the weight of the snow, and that resulted in some maintenance issues. And you had the shop literally taking it in, fixing it, and sending it right back out if if they could do it. And I know that Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the crews came in at 2:00 AM, and they stayed until about 4:00 the next afternoon. And they went home, they took a nap. And then they did it again on Sunday. And all I heard down there was phone call after phone call after phone call. Jennifer was taking a lot of that, you know, what about this? What about, there's a power line in my road. Ryan and his guys had a huge map out where they were identifying all of the various work order locations, trying to make sure that roads were getting plowed, but getting done so in a safe manner. The plowing was really slow because they had to stop for tree branches. They had to stop for power lines. But Jennifer and the rest of the team taking those calls continued to reassure everybody, you guys did a great video that you put out on Facebook. Here's where we're at right now. This is, this is what we're doing. This is what we're going to be doing. In a very challenging situation, this team stepped up in a major way, which is what they always do. So I want to personally thank you for that. And the spirit of the guys, even though they were dog tired, was really good. And in fact, they have some kind of a, some kind of a prediction thing going on with how much more, how much less. Whoever's on the upside of that, you should probably send them on vacation or something because we don't want them to win. Secondarily, I just want to wish all of our friends celebrating Passover this evening a very happy Passover. Best wishes from, you know, all of us to your family for a blessed year ahead. It's a very important day in the Jewish faith, so I hope everybody's having a great Seder. I also want to take a moment to recognize one of our firefighters, 27 years on the job, District Chief Jeff Brown, worked his last shift on the 31st, last Friday. And interestingly enough, part of his duties that day were going to the visitation for Jerry Gerlock, who recently passed away. All of us in town know the Gerlock family. And Pete, is it six generations of Gerlocks served on the Cottage Grove Fire Department? And and one of whom actually passed away after a event. And he got back to the fire station, and he had a cardiac arrest, and he passed away. But we've got, we've got grandfathers, and then, you know, their sons and their sons, all of whom have served on the department. It was a really nice turnout for Jerry's visitation and funeral at St. Rita's. And I can't thank Jeff enough for 27 years. He's been an amazing asset to this community. He's done everything. He, as a district chief, he was responsible for formulating all the annual training plans and coordinating all of that. He's been a mentor to so many firefighters who worked for the city of Cottage Grove and now many other agencies out there, always been a very reasonable, rational guy. And the thing I think I appreciate most about Jeff is the can-do attitude. Jeff was never that guy who was going to say, oh, that's a really bad idea. No, we can't make that happen. He was one of those people who, when you would sit down and have a conversation about making change, in 27 years, he lived through a lot of change. He said, yeah, we should try that. Yeah, let's figure out how to do that. Those kind of people are awesome teammates. They're great to work with. He never fell into the, you know, not my fault, lack of accountability kind of mindset that we sometimes see in the workplace. He was just a very positive influence. And I'm sure, I'm going to say he's going to be missed, but here's the deal, he won't be because I'm sure he'll be hanging around because he's retired. He doesn't have anything else to do. So anyway, congratulations, Jeff. Mayor, I also wanted to just take a moment to thank Brenda Malinowski, who's our finance director, in case you didn't know that. You know, Brenda got an email from me a couple weeks back about some data that I was looking at on the League of Minnesota Cities website. And I'm kind of a nerd. I like to play with that financial data a lot because I'm very proud of the way that our city manages its finances. And what I did is I, I took a spreadsheet that they had put out, and I kind of mapped out, where's the city of Cottage Grove in relation to peer communities over 40,000 population? Because we always compare ourselves to, you know, other cities in the county. But I wanted to kind of do a bigger look and see, are we really as good as we think we are? And Brenda, I don't know if you want to take a minute and maybe touch base on some of the things that we looked at. You probably are going to say it much more eloquently than I. But really, what I wanted to know is, you know, when we talk about the value to the taxpayer in the city of Cottage Grove, and we do that with regard to our peer communities in Washington County, does that same message resonate across the metro? And the fact of the matter is, it does. Can you maybe talk a little bit about what we, what we looked at together?
You know, here in Cottage Grove, we talk about our four sample properties, but we also talk about that median value home. And so we look at that compared to other communities in Washington County. But we took a, I took a deeper dive and looked at median value homes with populations over 40,000 in the metro area, because we can't just look at our, our tax rate or the value of the homes. We kind of have to look at, we have to look at what that taxpayer is paying. And so in Cottage Grove, our median value home in property taxes for 2023, they will be paying $1,082. That is the third lowest in the communities that we looked at. We know in Washington County, we're the second lowest. So we still compared very well. For example, we've got Edina at the top at 1,964. But then, you know, we're, we're lower than Plymouth, Apple Valley, Woodbury, and Lakeville, which are right around 1,200 to 1,275. So we, it was a good exercise. We compare very well.
And one of the things that I learned, and Brenda's going to have to say it because I'll say it wrong, is one of these communities that we compare to, which is Shakopee, over 40,000, they get a whole bunch of fiscal disparity money each year. And so that, that actually put them at the bottom of the list. Now, how does that work for them? How do they get that?
You know, I, we'll have to dive into that a little bit deeper because I can't explain that tonight. But when we looked at the tax rate, it's very low, and it is because of the fiscal disparities. And I didn't know if it was because of certain business that they had in town. And I didn't know if it was because of certain business that they had in town or what those factors were, but we'd have to look at what their makeup is compared to ours.
Right. Because, you know, Shakopee has the horse racing facility, they have Valley Fair, they have the big Amazon warehouse, a bunch of other things. So I found that really interesting because, you know, their, their rate is super, super low, but they get a whole bunch of that fiscal disparity money that we don't get. So if you know a guy, I mean, let, let us know, we got to figure that out. So thank you for sharing that because it was cool to see that when we compare against those other communities over 40,000 population, we still provide tremendous value to our taxpayer. Appreciate all the help with that, Brenda, and I'm sure it put a lot of extra work on your plate, and I'm sorry, but it turned out well in the end. And then the last thing, Mayor, is, you know, that diligence that we talk about all the time with regard to responsible budgeting and making sure that we're trying to look out ahead, as Councilmember Dennis said earlier, you know, making decisions that'll stand the test of time. We've recently had some reinforcement that we might be doing okay, and I'll leave that to you to talk about. Thank you.
All right. So I had, I'll say three specific topics. One was just kind of getting back to the Public Works comment. You know, kudos, right, like I said earlier, Ryan, to you, the staff, Jennifer, everybody that was really helping out. The one thing I thought was interesting, and I know we all, and I say we all, myself included up here at the council desk, have to be careful with what we see on social media because you generally see the worst of people, I'm just going to say it, on social media. And matter of fact, talking to our XL Energy rep who was here just a little bit earlier when she was literally going out to homes to check on people that I had talked to, they were much nicer in person than they are on the, I'll call it the keyboard commando. But what I wanted to make sure that the public understands, especially with this storm, there was a couple of things that I thought was interesting that I was seeing out on social media. One was, why isn't my street plowed? Or phone calls and things are getting, and, you know, part of the, or as soon it was plowed like it normally is. And part of that reason, other than Councilmember Olson mentioning, you know, trucks going down and having to get them fixed and get them back out, is because we had a lot of lines down and damage, tree damage, trees over roads, literally. We had to pull a couple of our plow drivers off plow routes to go clear roads for safety. And so that is a bigger piece of it. So there's multiple pieces that really drove that. So other than spending all those hours in the trucks, they were also immediately going out and getting out of the roads to make sure that the roads became passable, power lines were dealt with quickly and efficiently, as well as the trees. So, and then you kind of briefly touched upon it, the other one that I heard was, wow, the plow drivers are growing really fast through my neighborhood. And with the, the weight of the snow, that was a big, big issue, is trying to get that snow. Matter of fact, I happened, personally speaking, my, my street that I live on was not done until, I think, 11-ish, or 11 or 12 in the late morning, early afternoon. And I happened to be out there plowing my driveway with my snow blower, and the plow driver was coming by, and I have never seen a bigger pile of snow that he put up in my front yard. Now, I don't know if he did that intentionally for me, but what also happened, though, is that because it rolls and because it was so, so dense, on the end of my driveway, I had to like take the snow blower up to like get over these big humps that were left there. So believe me, I get it. Everybody was having those challenges, were upset about that, but the fact remains, it was a very particularly heavy snow, which took down trees. We had rain before that. So again, please pass all of our appreciation along. And again, if there are some times when our workers, police, whoever, look at social media, they might see a piece of that, that people don't feel appreciated, but I will tell you, there's a lot of people that do, the majority do. So I want to mention that. Second thing, Councilmember Olson, you mentioned, you kind of did a segue, and that is, we're very excited, and I know Councilmember Dennis had put something, speaking of social media also, as well as I did, the city of Cottage Grove recently had our credit rating upgraded to AAA. And why that is, other than, I'll say, cheaper money to borrow, the other thing that is amazing to me about what happened is we, when I first, even before I became mayor, when I was on the council, they had always aspired to get to AAA. And the word was, it's going to be way, way out there. It's going to be way, way out there. So while I've had the opportunity for being the mayor for 16 years, we have seen that, that rating go from AA to AA plus to AAA. And frankly, even not that many years ago, we had talked with Elers and them about this, and they said, there's still a couple of things you got to do. And, and I truly believe that most recently, when we just went through this lengthy budget cycle, where we're kind of planning out for up to, you know, five to 10 years down the road, I think it really shows them that we have the capacity and we have the ability and that we are very good stewards of the, of the, of the money. So, you know, kudos to all of our staff, our employees, the councils, this council, other councils, because it really does make, it's going to make a humongo difference to us going into the future as we go to borrow money, because our credit is extremely good in how we manage our finances.
It's as good as it gets.
Yes, yeah. So, and, and that was the other thing is, a city of our size, ironically, you mentioned the city sizes earlier, city of our size normally don't get AAA. And that was the other thing they shared with us, is you really got to get to like 50,000 or 60,000 people before you really could qualify because you have to have enough tax base and all that kind of stuff. So the fact that we already achieved the AAA status was pretty outstanding. So, you know, Brenda, kudos to you and your staff.
Yeah, you've only been back as the finance director for a year, and look at what you did. That's pretty awesome. Good job.
And then the last thing I wanted to mention, this is more of a, kind of a fun thing too, and that is, I'm pleased to also announce that we have, or I've had the opportunity to raise $25,000 total for the 4th of July fireworks again. And once again, it just goes back to share with you that, how great our business community is. And the last one that I just got confirmation from most recently, who I hadn't shared, was Hy-Vee. Hy-Vee has also donated, and that'll come out in the future donations, but Hy-Vee is graciously providing $5,000 also to the 4th of July fireworks. So just for the public to be aware, so Hy-Vee, Tennis, Sanitation, North Point, 3M, and Renewal by Anderson are all contributing $5,000 towards the Cottage Grove 4th of July fireworks once again. So I want to personally thank them, and if you get a chance to see them in some role or out in the community, maybe it's somebody that works for them, please thank them. Make sure that they know that we do appreciate them supporting the community by creating that great event. Otherwise, that event would not happen without their generosity. And thanks to the Lions, who are going to be putting all the other pieces together with that, that will make it a truly a family event on the 4th of July. All right. So with that, there, there is no workshop open to the public, but we do have a workshop that, as we mentioned earlier in the meeting, that's closed to the public. And I'll just mention again, just for the public, that the pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D .05, subsection 3B, for attorney-client privileged communications to discuss annexation of the Holcomb property and potential litigation. And so with that, we won't be closing in here, we will be moving to the conference room as the rest of the council. So everybody have a great evening.